Sir, that's the assessment from the Tax Office. Yes, sir.
That's from the Tax Office.
Mm.
But, is that the assessed value or how much it takes to bring it?
No, that's what we're saying it would take to, based on the cost of construction and the way we figure it, that's what it would take to bring the house up to a standard.
Okay.
An acceptable standard.
Mr. Keith?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. How do you come up with that number? I mean, you could tear it down and build up something that size. Do you know how they came up with the number?
I can't answer that question, to be honest with you, sir. I believe what we do, we have a calculation, I know there's a book.
Right.
And forgive me, I am a little new at this spot, but I know that's how we calculate it, is by what it would cost. I believe it's forty-nine dollars a square foot is what we look at.
Okay, well, that would make it almost an eighteen-hundred square foot house.
And I'm not, I don't know how many square foot this house is.
Yeah, by the pictures, it didn't look like that.
Okay.
I'm good.
Any other questions?
This question.
Mr. Evans, you got a motion to make?
Um, yes, sir. Um, the gentleman said that he would need two weeks, but in light of-
Let me close probably.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now, go ahead.
Forgive me. The gentleman said that it would take two weeks for him to do it, but in light to bring it to par, he said it would take two weeks, but in light of the way the weather is changing when I would like to ask the board to please consider that we give him sixty days to bring it up to speed.
I'll second the motion if that's the move.
Okay, Ms. Counsel, discussion?
Oh, yes. If during the sixty days, you were ple- no, during the two weeks that you said you needed, am I supposed to address him? Am I not supposed to address him?
Well, we can call him back to the podium. Come back. Come on back, Mr. Ford.
Come back, honey. Look, during the two weeks that you asked for, we're gonna give you more than that, but during the two weeks that you asked for, I want you to make sure, make sure, that whatever it is that you are planning to do meets the standards of our Planning Department.
Okay.
If it does not, in two months, you will be back here, we will, you know, we will go ahead and complete the order to demolish. But make sure you start tomorrow and find out, because it does not look to me, granted, I need glasses now, but it looks to me that you're gonna need more than two weeks to fix that, and a whole lot more money than you think, you might think, for it to pass our codes.
Okay, where did I find it, or who did I talk to about the codes?
You're gonna talk to one of these gentlemen right here. They are going to make an appointment with you and make sure that you understand before you leave here tonight. But I plan to vote for the motion.
Okay.
I think I might be a little bit out of order, but that's okay.
Okay, Mr. Lancaster has a question, discussion?
Are you willing to invest eighty-four thousand dollars?
No, I don't think it's gonna cost that much.
Well, may not, but that's kinda what you're up against.
Yeah.
Which seems to be a whole lot of money.
Yeah.
Whether it's two weeks or sixty days, and eighty-four thousand dollars to get it up to code.
Yes, sir. I'm willing to do what I gotta do.
Well, that's eighty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, I still don't think it's gonna cost that much.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Evans, you want to put this in the form of a motion on the-
Um, yes, sir, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. I hope I worded this correctly. This is case number?
Ten sixty-eight dash two thousand and fifteen.
Okay. Um, for case number ten sixty-eight, two thousand and fifteen, I move that we give the gentleman sixty days in order to comply to the wishes of the Planning Committee. Can I say that right?
And you're including the additional information this year, and I'm gonna second that motion.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
And I am including the additional information, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I second it.
All right, any further discussion?
For the record, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Evans, the additional information you're including is that you find the findings of the building inspector as the true facts in this case, and you give the property owner sixty days to bring the property into compliance before the order of demolition is entered, is that, you don't want to hear this case again, is what I'm trying to get to, you're not just giving them the sixty day continuance, are you finding this to be the true facts of the case?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Second, is that-
And thank you.
Well, and I don't necessarily, I mean, that motion goes a little farther than I want. In sixty days, if he's done substantial rehabilitation of this property such that it looks, I mean, we don't know what the weather's gonna be, I mean, that's the whole problem, you talked about in your motion, is I know it's supposed to rain this weekend or whatever, if we get something out of, if he's done substantial compliance, and it comes, it doesn't come back, and they just go ahead and demolish it, and he's put quite a bit into it, I'd rather, I would ask that it come back, and we at least review what has been done, and we can enter the order at that point to demolish it or not demolish it. I think that's the purview of this board, and not necessarily of someone else, so.
Well, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I think, I don't ever recall a demolishment being done without it coming before the board. So, what I'm saying is, I mean, whatever, regardless of, I'm not gonna say that, but um, I think that it will come before the board, am I correct in saying that? I think it will come before the board before it's demolished.
Not the way he said that motion.
But that's why I was trying, that's what I was trying to get the intent, because you had added stuff that wasn't read in the record, I was just trying to clarify that. If it's just a matter of continuing for sixty days, that's fine, and we clarify, thank you for the clarification. It will come back.
And I'm sorry that I didn't state that, but Commissioner Adams, yes, I think that it will come before-
Thank you.
Matter of fact, it will come before the board before any action is taken to demolish.
So, just put this matter off for sixty more days?
Exactly.
There was option three, not option two.
Jesus.
Correct.
That's correct.
That's right.
All right, is there, everybody clear on the motion? All in favor of the motion?
Unanimous.
The next minimum housing case is case MH eleven fifty-eight dash two thousand and fifteen.
By the way, Mr. Keith, I'll have an answer to that question next time we come here. This is case MH one-one-five-eight dash two thousand and fifteen. Property owner is John J. Postal. Property is located at three oh four Caleb Drive in Fayetteville. And this is also a dilapidated structure.
Can I see those one more time?
Sure.
Just a little slower, just. That, this one, those pictures you showed me, are they in that, in that one or the first one? All that you showed me, those pictures, those last pictures of the roaches and the floor and all that, is that in that dilapidate, one there in the back, or the thing in the front?
No, sir, I believe that's accessory building there, and this picture is actually in the house.
In the front house, okay.
Yes.
Yes, in the house, okay.
Okay, any speakers?
We have no speakers.
All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing, close the public hearing. My switches of the board.
Cut, cut, cut me off.
Okay, Ms. Counsel. Go ahead, Ms. Counsel.
No, no.
You're on.
Okay. I move that we adopt the order and report the, of the minimum housing inspector's the true facts in this case, in order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within thirty days, in order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so and impose a lien on the real property or the cost of such action, and to direct the clerk, to incorporate the foregoing findings in orders, in an ordinance certified by the chairman, and record the same in the register of deeds.
Second motion. Any discussion, question? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item number four is an update on the Cumberland County Strategic Plan by Ms. Sally Shutt.
Hey, Sally.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, in your agenda packet, you have a detailed report on achievements throughout the strategic plan, and tonight, I'm just gonna hit some of the highlights under each of the goals. To ensure a safe and healthy community by providing needed services to our citizens in a timely manner, and under the objective of providing youth development program opportunities that promote good citizenship, our Department of Social Services held an event honoring foster children who graduated from high school, and our Health Department, Library, Cooperative Extension, and several other departments offer programming for youth. Under the objective of assisting with efforts to reduce crime by repeat offenders, the Critical Time Intervention Program at our Detention Center is a partnership between Alliance Behavioral Healthcare and the Detention Center, the Sheriff's Office. A provider has been hired, there are three staff who are forming that CTI team, and so far, five referrals have been received for the pre-release engagement and post-release intensive case management. In the area of improving emergency response services to our citizens, the city and the county have hired a consultant to develop a feasibility study for a co-location and/or consolidation of the two P-SAPS to include an emergency operations center. There've been enhancements to Code RED, and there's text to nine-one-one available through the four major cell companies. Cumberland is participating in a regional hazard mitigation plan with Hope County, and back in August, a joint full-scale hazardous material exercise was held with Bladen County. In the area of providing programs to promote a healthy community, DSS has hosted a collective impact forum on youth who are aging out of foster care. They also participated in Project No Risk, which deals with human trafficking. Our Health Department received a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant from the Food and Drug Administration, and that is to help with food safety. The Health Department completed the State of the County Health Report, and they are working on smoke-free campus initiatives they've met with Methodist University, FTCC, and FSU. In the area of collaboration on the homelessness initiative, our Cumberland County Community Development Department has developed a community resource inventory list and are ongoing providing updates to that. They are conducting research on potential housing opportunities and looking at successful models in other communities for areas of best practices. There is a coordinated housing intake and referral form that's been developed, and a job description has been created for a coordinator position. Under the goal number two, which is our infrastructure goal, to provide adequate infrastructure consistent with orderly growth of a dynamic county. In the area of our county facilities, the inventory and assessment of the county facilities has been completed, as well as the parking lot study. The capital improvement plan was included in the FY two thousand and sixteen budget. Finance and engineering and infrastructure are working on financing options to fund a three-year CIP items for parking lots, roofs, and building exteriors for the departments and also the Crown Complex. And I hope that you have noticed the directional signage here at the courthouse and over at the historic courthouse. Green initiatives, we've got recycling containers, they are temporary recycling containers in our public areas, and we will be ordering more permanent ones, we're kinda doing a test now to find out what are some good locations where, which we get the most recycling from. And today, under technology advancements, today, we went live with Wi-Fi in the courthouse on all the floors, and so that's going very well. Digital records system, child support, they have implemented their digital records. DSS will kick off November sixteenth. Veteran Services, they're expected to implement their digital records December thirty-first, so by the end of this year. And our Health Department now has electronic medical records in their clinics. Continuing on technology advances, ERP, that is Enterprise Resource Planning Software, that's the upgrade for our financial and HR, Human Resources Departments. Finance and Information Services are setting up the charter of accounts now through December, then they'll start training for the months January through April, and the go-live date is projected to be May one, two thousand and sixteen. And then, that will be followed by the HR completion date estimated for October two thousand and sixteen. The Enterprise Solutions Division, now that is a part, they're gonna be supporting the Business Intelligence Initiative, they are now adequately staffed to do that, and procurement process has started, that will start in November for the final phase of the telecommunications plan. Beautifying our gateways and across the county, Cooperative Extension has now put in last year seven thousand nine hundred volunteer hours, and last year added seventeen, seventeen new master gardeners to their program, and of course, when Lisa Childers was up here, she mentioned that it's the master gardeners who are working on Fort Bragg with the program at the Transition Brigade. Economic development is the third goal, and to ensure that practices are in place to promote economic development. The new nonprofit that will be jointly funded by the city and county will be established and by the end of the, I'm sorry, beginning of two thousand and sixteen. The library is continuing to offer job and career programs, and they have taken on the initiative of targeting young people ages fourteen to twenty-four. Our workforce development through the Cumberland Career Center is providing information to prospective companies, they also provide space for recruitment and hiring, and offer free classes through FTCC. We also have the goal of promoting our agricultural industry and cooperative extension, as you've heard earlier tonight, they're reaching out to our military, and one of those areas is particularly to our military veterans. They offer classes, farm visits, and other outreach efforts to veterans who are considering transitioning into agriculture. We've already talked about the garden on Fort Bragg, they are also advising the Fayetteville Farmers Market Association, and this year, they had a summer intern who helped promote local farm products, and they even created a brochure. In the area of the military impact, we have the objective of improving our communication and partnership with Fort Bragg, we are working on intergovernmental agreement with the post and animal control to provide animal control services on post. And workforce development and the Economic Development Alliance have developed a survey of those individuals who are exiting the military, and they will be reporting that data to you in the future. Effective communication is goal number four, and in the area of increasing our citizen engagement, our Citizens Academy will graduate October twenty-seventh. Several of our departments are conducting outreach through community events, whether it's the International Folk Festival or health-related events, the library's doing those, and those are listed in the agenda packet. The Health Department has received a grant to do Reach Out and Read, and that's where they are providing books to parents, so that parents can read the books to their children, and that is when they come in, and they receive the books when they bring their child in for the well-child checkups. Enhancing communication and transparency, we really worked with Finance and our Public Information Office to develop a user-friendly budget document that's up on the website for FY two thousand and sixteen, and our public library, the public computers in the library now have links to the county website, so it's very easy for customers to link to our information. And in the area of improving our internal communication with employees, we made a very, very strong effort to reach all employees who do not have email, to ensure that they had received and were handed paper copies of the information about our wellness fair and our dependent eligibility audit, we had strong campaigns on that, and those were very successful and had a great response. The web-based performance management system, HR and IS are working on some automation updates on those. The Department of Social Services has kicked off its own web-based performance management system by expanding their NeoGov expand, um, system. And our HR policies are now under, have been proposed by HR, and they're under review, and they're, according to the timeline, to be approved and expected to be disseminated by January one. The Enterprise Solutions staff, and again, that's part of the Business Intelligence Initiative, will be conducting analysis, and they'll be focusing on ways to, and automated systems that, to help us enhance our service delivery, so we're looking forward to getting those reports from them and some guidance. Our finance software is under conversion, as I mentioned earlier, and HR is exploring the feasibility of flexible work schedules. IS and PIO are exploring feedback system options, and our Safety Committee has been established in the area of staff development, and HR is also developing departmental outlines for succession planning, and they've started working with some departments in that area, they hope to have that finished by the end of the fiscal year. HR is also conducting a survey of employee recognitions and bringing back some best practices, and Tax Administration has started its own departmental newsletter. Commissioner Keith mentioned the Employee Wellness Program earlier tonight, we have, that is the fifth objective under the goal of providing excellent customer service. We wanted to recognize the importance of the employee's health and fitness for the benefit of the employee, as well as the entire organization. So, we've developed branded Wellness Connection emails, and are sending now as much information as we can about the ongoing effort through the wellness program. The clinic has moved location, is that that open house was held on June twenty-seventh. Providing incentives to encourage employees to participate, a wellness garden was created this spring and in the summer, and employees were able to grow fresh vegetables, fruits and vegetables. We now offer volleyball, softball, and basketball teams, and actually competed against the city teams in that. There are running, walking, and biking groups, you can see photos there of employees who've been out biking, you might recognize the deputy county manager there, and classes like yoga, zumba, cooking, and many more. And today, this week, we kicked off the Employee Wellness Fair, so it's important to mention that, one of the key incentives is that if you participate in the wellness fair, and if you meet three of the four benchmarks, then you will continue to receive or be eligible to receive the thirty-dollar-per-month reduction in your insurance premiums. And that completes the update.
Questions or comments, Sally, from anybody? Ms. Evans?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I would like to say, Miss Shutt, you always do a splendid job in making presentations to us, but I can't go without mentioning, when you talked about the library, the library is one of our departments that are, one of the areas of the county that we should be extremely proud of. The staff there, I don't wanna mess up our director's name, Ms. R., we don't, I don't wanna mess up her name.
Jody Rishis, sure.
But I tell you what, the employees there, customer service skills, everything, assisting everyone that come in to get help, their work with job fairs and employment opportunities and all of that. We have a tremendous library system here in Cumberland County, and I just wanted to say, thank you for what you do, and providing information and getting that out to us, as well as abroad, and also thank the library for everything that they do, and whoever the liaison is-
(laughing)
I would like, I would like to thank you, sir, for what you do to contribute to that.
You got a comment from anybody? Thank you, Sally.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate what you do all the time, thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, and because Mr. Evans, I wanted to steal my thunder, we do have one of the members of the Board of Trustees for the library that's present, and we'd just like to recognize her, she is here.
Thank you. Beautiful job, beautiful job.
All right, the next item, Ms. Cannon?
Yes, sir. Item number five is nomination and appointment of the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee.
This is a new committee, is that correct?
Isn't the one that you did with Bladen County, I mean, that's kinda like that?
This is regional.
Yes.
The Hope County one? That asked, is this the one that Sally asked, that was in the paper?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Chair? Yeah.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Henry Eisenbarth. It's page three, item five, and Mr. Jay Wyatt.
It's a nomination.
It's a nominations and appointments.
This is, uh-
Well, I was just putting up for nominations first.
I lost a page, I have-
Give me those names again, Jimmy.
Mr. Henry Eisenbarth.
And what's the other one?
It's Mr. John J. Wyatt.
Other nominations?
Mr. Chair, if there's no other nomination, I can make a third one, too, if-
No, there were three recommended.
Okay, you wanna put those in nominations?
And I was trying to put those in nomination, but I keep going past the-
Who were they recommended by?
I can't, and I assume they have been vetted.
I don't think we have any for them.
Yeah, we have three, it's Barrett, Lowe, Orbethay, and Alexia Fields.
And I looked, at least one of them was a graduate of the-
Citizens Academy?
Of the Citizens Academy, and I think they've been vetted, Mr.-
I'd like to-
I can't find, I can't find page one hundred, I know it's on page one hundred.
Page one hundred and one.
Well, no wonder.
Yes.
Well, one of, one of them, I'll just go through them at least, I've got them, so I'll just go ahead and save it. One is a graduate of the Military Academy.
Yes.
Central Michigan University.
Barrett, Percy.
The other one, Orbethay, is a retired federal employee, BS in Business Administration, State and County Emergency Training and graduate. And then, Barrett Lowe is, has an MS in Engineering Physics and BS in Engineering. So, and Jimmy, I'll be glad to give you equal time on your nominees, but these people look very well qualified to me, so.
Well, I'll take the equal time, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Well, Mr. Henry Eisenbarth is also a graduate of the Citizens Academy, he's got a thirty-year career in special operations out at Fort Bragg, he's very active in the Federal Rotary Club, and a number other organizations here in town. He also has a very, very extensive background in hazard mitigation and large-scale operation. I, I am a little taken back on recommendations, I am the liaison on this, and I wasn't aware of these before late last week. That being said, if we're gonna do the, if we're gonna do the nominations and appointments, you know, Mr. Chair, we can go forward with it, but I will put out that, at the last policy meeting, I did present a nomination format that I hope that we may consider in the future to alleviate things like this, because we don't really have much background on, on the folks here. background on, on the folks here, and you don't have much background on the folks that I said either. But I think that this is a new program. I believe that we should be able to vet them...